All righty. Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you all for coming. I have to, this is technically a committee meeting of the Town Council Study Committee, so we have to call to order the committee meeting and accept the agenda. Can I have a motion from our committee members?
To accept the agenda.
Agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
We're all here together. A reminder of everyone, both on the committee as well as our visitors, our fellow citizens, that the meeting is being recorded, so everything that you say, you know, can and might be used against you, if you will. So please keep in mind the fact that your image and what you say is being recorded. This is the first of three information sessions that were the Town Council Study Committee is holding prior to annual town meeting to give our fellow citizens an opportunity to ask some questions and hear about what we've been working on for the last 18 months. The way we're gonna, we plan to run this is I'll go through a presentation that we've used on a number of these information sessions and meetings with public and other members of the community. Hopefully, that'll be five or 10 minutes, and then really, we're gonna leave it open to questions from you. Leave it open to questions from you, and we'll answer questions and have an open discussion for as long as folks want to stay. I do ask that, you know, as with most public meetings, that if you have a question or want to make a statement, come up to one of the microphones, identify yourself, and go from there. And as far as the three-minute stuff, we'll sort of see how it plays out, okay? All right. Can we, Sophia, can I ask you to, or Jeff, can we put the presentation up?
All right. Just one more.
Yeah, okay. All right. Again, if any of you have been to one of our meetings before, this may seem familiar. We're gonna talk about the committee, give you a little bit of background on municipal government in Massachusetts, talk about why we think open town meeting has some issues and why a town council, town manager form of government might make some, we think would make a lot of sense for the, for the community. And then, one thing that is different than the information sessions that we did last fall is that over the last six, seven months, we have composed a draft charter, a town council form of government draft charter, and so we can talk about some of the characteristics and terms of that document. So we can turn to the next page, Jeff. Just a little background on the committee. It was actually organized because of Article 81 of the 2023 Town Meeting. It's a citizens article submitted by one of our committee members, Curtis Barnes, and the purpose was to study the establishment of a town council form of government and then ultimately submit an article to a future town meeting, you know, asking for voter support to actually convert from open town meeting to town council, town manager. The select board appointed nine voting members to the committee back in October of 2023, and we've been operating since then. One of the select board's request was that we actually expand the review part of our work and not just look at town meeting, town manager, but look at the other forms of municipal government available in Massachusetts, just to see that, make sure that we've really looked at the waterfront in terms of what's out there. After the review of those other forms of government, we did actually have a vote back in, I think it was May or June of 2024, and we voted to go ahead with focusing only on town council, town manager as a, as an option. Go to the next page. Not much to say about this, just to give you a little bit of background, the four forms of government in Massachusetts are open town meeting, representative town meeting, town council, town manager, which we're suggesting is the way to go, and then city council/mayor forms, which are generally the largest municipalities in the state. And the open town meeting is sort of broken into larger-than-6,000 population and less-than-6,000 population. The state requires towns that have less than 6,000 citizens, they are required to use open town meeting as their form of government. Larger-than-6,000 have the option to do something other than town meeting. Quickly, next slide. Okay. Quickly, you know, open town meeting has, is broadly used by municipalities in New England, actually around the rest of the country, probably 60, 65% of municipalities use something akin to town council, but it's been a part of Nantucket's culture and history for obviously hundreds of years. It is a form of direct democracy in that citizens gather to consider legislative issues and vote on them. And Nantucket actually has had better-than-average turnout, even though the numbers are modest, with turnout for annual town meeting ranging between 5% and 15% over the last 20 years. So that's actually a positive thing. But if we go to the next page, one of the issues that prompted Curtis to compose this article two years ago, and I think one of the things that motivates all of us on this committee is, you know, what are the issues with, with open town meeting? And we believe it's actually out, that the town and its issues have outgrown open town meeting as a way to govern ourselves. It's a slow and cumbersome process. There are only one or two legislative sessions, town meetings, a year. There are a lot of complicated and, I guess, large numbers of complicated issues that people have, that the town meeting has to deal with, and I think that, we feel that town council offers us a way to deal with some of them more, more adeptly, I think, than having 1,000 people try to debate an issue. Also, we believe that open town meeting doesn't fully represent the voters of Nantucket. You probably all know that there are 10,000 registered voters on Nantucket, but we've rarely had more than 1,000 people show up for town meeting. And so there are folks who aren't interested, can't get there, don't have the resources to, to take three or four afternoons or evenings off from work or from their other obligations, and I don't think, we don't think that their, their perspectives are necessarily being reflected at open town meeting. Go to the next page, Jeff. I'm not gonna touch on this one. This is just, cites some of the differences between open town meeting and town council, town manager form of government. The principal issue is town council operates continuously in most municipalities. They have two meetings a month or 24 meetings per year. What's so good about town council, town manager form? It's a form of representative democracy. It operates continuously. We believe that the nine, we're proposing nine counselors in our, our version, or Nantucket's version, but we think that those, those dedicated, hard-working politicians are gonna be well-educated and knowledgeable about the issues that they face and are be able to deal with things more expeditiously than when you have 1,000 people show up for town meeting who are not all at the same level of understanding on the issues. Nantucket already has a pretty strong town manager structure, and that's really not, doesn't really represent any particular, you know, barrier to converting from open town meeting.
Can I add something to that real quickly? I, I think one of the other advantages that we discussed a lot, and Joe briefly kind of touched on it, is town council is a very deliberative process. You can have issues discussed week to week without necessarily having a decision point that's, that's forced in a moment in time, where open town meeting is really more of an approval function where you're saying yes or no at a specific date and time, and there's public debate that goes with that, but there's no real mechanism to say, we need more information to make a better decision, we need to go get more information to make a decision. There's a decision that has to be made as part of that, that town meeting. That's the way the parliamentary procedure with that works, and I think that the committee felt that having the ability to have a more deliberative process to make sure that the best information is had and available for not just the council, but for the public to, to view and understand and have that conversation was an important part of the town council process.
Anybody else? Where are we? Oh, can we go to the path to town council? Again, I'm not gonna take too much time on this, but the conversion process, assuming voters actually approve this, like, the conversion process from open town meeting to town council would probably be two or three years. The town, the town meeting vote would actually go to the State House first as a home rule petition. It would probably be 12 to 18 months at that, with the legislature considering it. Assuming it's approved by the legislature, it would come back, be put on the ballot again, and then after that ballot, which generally occurs in May or June for Nantucket, it would probably be another year before you could actually arrange for the elections necessary to populate the town council and to, you know, finally convert from, from a select board to a town council form of government. So it's, this process, we're really just at the beginning. Just touching on a couple of the characteristics of the draft charter that we've completed and is available on our, on the town website. Talking a little bit about town council, we're proposing nine town counselors with three-year rolling terms, so every year, three of the town counselors would be up for reelection. One of those counselors would be elected as the president of the town council and act as the sort of leader of the process. One thing that is quite unusual in what we're, what we're proposing is, of the 13 communities in Massachusetts that have town council, town manager forms of government, the compensation for those positions probably runs from sort of $10,000 to $20,000 a year. We're proposing a much more substantial stipend of $40,000 a year for the regular town counselors with a, an extra $10,000 fee for the president of the council. And we were motivated to make that, that proposal because, in large, in large part because our understanding of the workload of the select board, which I, which we don't think is gonna be necessarily as demanding as being a town counselor, is virtually a full-time job, and I think many of you probably know that our, our select board gets paid $3,500 a year, which is really not reflective of the amount of work and time that they all put into it. So I think we all felt strongly that we were gonna make a statement that, given the, the cost of living on Nantucket and the demands on the, on the time of these professionals, that this was a time to make a bigger statement in terms of what their compensation could be.
Real quickly to that, too, just to add, not to keep interrupting. I think one of the other reasons why we were looking at that as well is a way to try to help people that may be interested in participating and being a counselor, that have full-time employment currently, that are working, knowing the time demands of what a council position could take, that if that was taking away, you know, part of their time and ability to make a, an everyday living, to have something commiserate with their time to help soften that blow, to try to find, you know, working professionals that are, you know, builders and landscapers and store owners and folks to participate and know that if they're gonna give 20 hours of their time during that week, that if they're moving away from their business, that there's kind of a fair compensation that goes with that for their time, and I think that was something that, at least I felt was important. I think some of the rest did as well.
Go to the elected, appointed. One more. The, the major part, point of this particular slide is that we recognize that this is, we're proposing a rather dramatic change to the way the town would be governed, and so virtually every detail or every element of town administration and organization, we attempted to keep as much the same as possible and really have a process that would, to put it simply, sort of unplug the select board and then plug in, if you will, the town council as the legislative body for the town. We didn't want to comp, overcomplicate this proposal with changes in committees and commissions and which ones were elected and which ones were appointed. So we have, if you ever take the time to read through the, the draft charter, all the, all the bodies that were elected bodies under the current structure, the way we operate, remain elected. All the, all the commissions that were appointed remained appointed. So we didn't propose any organizational or structural changes. We figured if this were to come to pass, the town council would have the opportunity to make those changes after they were sort of running things. Okay. Just, we're, one more slide. We can just crawl to the finish line. The...
Okay. We'll just see where that...
Okay. Where are we?
With the difficulties there, too. We'll be sure. The Town Council Study Committee has their own webpage on the, on the town website. We can always post the presentation for people to see and look at there as well.
The last slide, and I will just touch on it, was titled Resident Participation Members. One of the bits of feedback we've had from fellow citizens here on Nantucket has been, well, you know, how do I influence things? I don't, I'm losing my voice, you know, the, I'm losing my vote, I'm not gonna have an opportunity to, to impact the political process. And the slide that, oh, we do have it up, summarizes Section 8 of the draft charter, the town council form that we're proposing actually has more opportunities and ways that citizens can impact the political process than, than our current open town meeting select board. So I'm not gonna go through them all in detail, but there are sort of rising levels of impact in terms of simply going to a town council meeting and making a statement at the, at the microphone, getting signatures up, and petitioning the, the town council, various initiative members, and they get sort of stronger and stronger as you go along, depending on, obviously, the level of concern or interest in the, in the community. So we think that while this change would mean that the group gathering of open town meeting would go away, there are still numerous ways that active and interested citizens can, can impact and be part of the, the political process.
Real quickly to that, too. I think it's also important to note that these are all ways for, for voters and residents to actively participate, in some cases by, you know, filing a request or petition or signatures, but regular town council meetings will still be, you know, they're still subject to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, so they still have to be posted. They still, you know, are obviously open to the public. I, I think it's generally assumed that there would still be, if you haven't filed a petition for a specific topic or something to come up, obviously, they would still be taking public comment, and you could come freely talk, and obviously, any board has the ability to set their own policies and procedures to some degree, but there are lots of ways to get things on the agenda, from one person filing a request or just going to the meeting to participate itself, all the way, like Joe said, through. If you disagree with a decision that the council's made, there's a citizen mechanism to potentially overturn that decision of the council, too. So there's lots of interesting avenues, but again, I just want to make sure everyone understands that they're not meeting in some darkroom somewhere privately, it's, it's all subject to open meeting law and such.
And with that, I will stop talking and open it up to questions or comments from, from our visitors, from the audience. So as I said at the beginning, if, if you would like to ask a question or make a statement, please come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and ask away.
Could you ascend?
Hi, Nancy.
I'll work all season. As a resident voter. I just had a quick question. Earlier, you said that if, if the voters pass, that they would prefer a town council form of government at the polls, then it goes to the legislature, which takes about a year, year and a half, and then it comes back for another vote?
Another vote, yeah. It goes onto the ballot again, and then if that passes the, that, sort of the third step, the, the return to the town on the ballot, if it's, if it's affirmed again by the voters, then you basically have to start, you know, planning out this handoff, if you will, of, the select board handles everything up until the end of the next, next fiscal year, as I understand it, and at the same time, the in-the-wings town counselors are sort of operating in parallel, so that you just, you kind of cut off and they, they take over, the select board disappears. And, and I, I'm, I mean, it is, well, you, you attended a couple of our meetings, there is definitely some mismatch, at this point mismatch, in terms of election dates and kind of the way you're managing and structuring things for the town today and what, the way that this would work, and I think some of those details, again, if it moves forward, we're gonna have to sort them all out, so.
And the first time it would go to the voters, would it be a full, the full charter? Or would it be simply the question, do you want to change?
It would be the full charter.
Okay. That's why, okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify, just, again, the, the first one is, your town meeting would have to pass a request for a special act of the legislature to convert, and that's what the charter would go through. The state legislature, upon approving that special act, it would then come back for a ballot vote at the next eligible election? And then, just to expand briefly on what Joe said, there's a section of the draft charter that includes kind of transition language that spells out how that transition would work as part of it, but again, that would take some time, and I think if you do, it was at the legislature, there'd be time to start thinking about that potential transition a bit, too, and then if it passes there, to also kind of preparing if that change was coming.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Brooke Gibbs. I have a lot of feedback. First thing is, present situation is not as beautiful as it may seem from the outside. I don't think that the select board gets enough compensation for the amount of work they do. I think the best thing to do presently is, they really, as, in the last 30 years, the evolution of responsibilities here has really grown, okay? It's not just the way it used to be, and, and it all just gets procedurally taken care of by different departments and stuff. The bombardment from exterior influences is, has increased a lot. So we have people from Boston and New York and DC and Connecticut and everything pushing in on the decision-making processes with their lawyers and the procedures and the turnovers of people in office and all that other stuff. If we had the select board as a full-time role and compensated, and, and I thought a good amount would be one-tenth of the average value of a house on Nantucket. So right now, and I know that sounds kind of strange, but if you think about, if you're serving on the select board and you serve for 10 years, you should be able to afford to live here and not rent. You know what I'm saying? So, and your input to that body and that, and that, and to the community should be enough to sustain you in perpetuity if you want to serve for 20 years, or if you, if you do serve for 20 years. You know what I'm saying? So if you averaged a mortgage out over the lifespan of your career as, as a public figure, you'd be able to afford that if that was your full-time job over long term. You know what I'm saying? So one-tenth of the value of a house would sustain your one week out of the month that your mortgage is, you know, your 25% of the way it used to be, to afford your, your house, and then all of your other bills and your costs of livings and all that other stuff. And right now, if it's 2.4, then it's 240,000 a year, and then that gets adjusted annually based on inflation and based on influences of living here and how much it costs, because if this market keeps going up and down and up and down and up and down, and it's erratic, we can compensate somebody 40, 50,000. If we have crazy inflation in a few years, that number is a third of what is necessary for the amount of time they put in, for the influence they have, then there's no way to adjust, you know, you'd have to go back through all these procedures again to readjust to make it viable. You know what I'm saying? And personally, I would love to give every, I would love to have it as a full-time job because there's so many things that need to be attacked, that every week, we bombard the select board with these questions, and they're like, I can't answer that right now. You know what I'm saying? I've gotta come back to you in two weeks, or I gotta talk to the lawyer, or I gotta go to the, to the general contractor, or I gotta go to the state, or I gotta go ask all these questions, and it's really delays the impact of the input of the person that's trying to solve the problem. Do you know what I'm saying?
Got it.
Second thing is, and, and that's really pretty straightforward, no one will wonder what they're getting paid to commit full-time to solving everyone's problems, is they'll be like, wow, I can afford to dedicate my whole time to taking care of this full plate of issues that I've got. I'm not gonna, the 40,000 or 50,000 is nice, but now I can really commit myself because I don't have to worry about making all my bills. You know what I'm saying? Off of, off of everything else that I'm responsible for. Second thing was, the nine-person representation for Nantucket, I think it should be communities. We should have, like, and, and per-population of year-rounder in that community, like, like, for example, Dionis needs to be represented by Dionis because their land and all the property along there is affected, you know, differently than it is anywhere else on the island, you know, but most of those houses are seasonal. So there's maybe three people, five houses or so, along Eel Point Road, where everybody lives year-round. You know what I'm saying? So, but they still need to be heard. You know, it's like Tom Nevers has tons of people living there year-round, but they're out of town, you know? So it's like, if you did it proportional to population and region, Wisconsin has three, you know, one for South Town, one for Midtown, one for North Town, you know? Quidnet has one, Squam has one, Pulpice has one, you know, Pacomo has one. You know what I'm saying? You'll then be able to, to proportionalize the island based on population and give it an even voice, like, no one's gonna, how many people from Essex or from down Bartlett Road are gonna run for town council? Do you know what I'm saying? No, nobody, because nobody in that neighborhood makes enough money to afford to spend that amount of their spare time trying to get their voices heard for their neighborhood. Do you know what I'm saying? So I really think that if you back it out and look at it from a regional part of the island, there's lots of, there's, there is diversity here that isn't, won't be represented by those five people on the select board or those nine people on the council, because the professions of those people in those certain neighborhoods are not gonna get any, you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I hear you. Maybe we should let some other people, yeah?
Yeah, no problem.
Can I ask you to wrap it up?
Yeah, that's fine.
You can always come back.
Okay. That's cool. Thanks.
Hi, Laura Ramo. I wanted to ask a question, actually, about the elected members as well, just was it gonna be at-large? Because I think it would be very difficult to get members of the community to run that would fit in that bubble of that precinct, because we have such a movable feast of people who are, because the nature of the housing crisis out here, people move frequently. My other question was, what is the most recent example of a community in Massachusetts that has changed from open town meeting to town council?
Actually, I, I think the, the last one that we saw from the Collin Center was Amherst. I think Amherst was fairly recently. They, they converted from representative town meeting to town council, town manager. Barnstable? I don't remember how long ago Barnstable converted.
Barnstable. Franklin, Mass. has been in the last 20 years as well.
Did Barnstable go from open to council, or has it been rep?
Yes.
I believe they went from open. We can double-check. We'll probably ask the Collin Center. We can definitely get an answer to that. Does someone want to talk about the at-large part?
Yeah, I can talk.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Bridgewater as well. We had a great conversation with the town manager of Bridgewater. But as for district, we, we thought it over and we just, you know, kind of realized, or came to the realization that it wasn't gonna be easy. There was a lot of gerrymandering and things that, you know, could go on, and right now, the neighborhoods are kind of represented by neighborhood associations, and so that's, if you wanna say, that's the sort of feeder system, that could be it. We just thought, man, this is really complicated to do, and decided against it. So at-large.
Actually, if I could add to that, one of the things that we discovered about two months ago was that back in 2001, Nantucket was exempted from having to months ago was that, back in 2001, Nantucket was exempted from having to have political precincts because of its size and modest population. And so that was sort of a, didn't have to deal with that. But when we were sort of going back and forth between at-large or precincts or districts, part of the, part of the problem with Nantucket and where its population lives is you'll, you would end up with these sort of very crazy defined tracts of land, you know, trying to get mad at, you know, the people who live full-time in Maticet, you know, and this teeny, I imagine this teeny little corridor coming back into the more, you know, closer to town to get the rest of the, I think it's 400 people is the minimum you can have in a precinct. And at any rate, it was, it would make it very, very difficult to define anything that looked normal to balance out all the, all the population. And then we discovered, oh, we don't need to have precincts, the state gave us exemption of it 20 years ago, so.
Yeah, it's just that the councilor had to move because of block housing was a renter.
Right.
Then they wouldn't be eligible to be a councilor.
Right.
So, that's part of the reason that the state gave us that whole rule of council. So we can ask them, and part of it is to ask them, yes.
Yeah, kind of, when we kind of looked at it as an exercise, too, right? There's, there's rules around precincts with, with the minimum size that Joe mentioned of 400, but they also need to be fairly equal in size, right? You can't have one where there's, you know, made up number, 3,000 residents in the precinct and another one where there's 401. They have to be relatively equal. And I think as we were looking, and, I don't know, I, I kind of got nerdy about it in my own time and kind of dealt with it and was looking at it where you were gonna end up with huge population centers where, like a district that would be for, for Quidnet would include pretty much from there all the way down to Milestone Road through Pulpos and Shimo to get it to equal out with a small pocket around Tom Nevers. And it, it was kind of losing that neighborhood-by-neighborhood feel, just because some of them were gonna have to be so huge to equal out the populations, or those populations were gonna be carved up. And I think when we were looking at that, you know, we, we would hopefully think that, you know, there were issues that were pressing that people would, would run for, you know, and also be a part of the communities that they're still in.
I just wanted to comment, John phones. It sounds like what you're talking about, it sounds more like RTM. Why didn't you guys look into RTM?
Representative town meeting?
That's the usual process, you go from open town meeting to RTM and then move on to town council.
I mean, I, I, I'll start, but you, you know, the basic problem is it doesn't, it doesn't really solve the fundamental problem of open town meeting. Representative town meetings, you still only have one or two meetings a year. So in terms of dealing with an important issue or an issue that arises during, you know, the six or seven, whatever the distance is between the town meetings, you're, you're still stuck waiting for town meeting to be able to have a legislative decision. You know, as I think I said earlier in the, in the presentation, one of the biggest benefits that communities in Massachusetts that have converted their town, form of town government, and the 13 that have gone to town council, town manager, is they've gotten bigger, they've gotten more complicated, the issues they're facing are complicated, and they need a governmental process that is dealing with things as they happen. And representative town meeting doesn't, doesn't do that. Now, there's some other districts, though, like you're sort of talking about.
We are, we don't recommend districts here. We, I mean, geographically, we're a bad candidate for that, right? 50% of our island's indebted conservation, so, like, no one even lives there to represent those spaces, which are actually really precious. So it's not just a population issue, I'd say it's a geography issue. So none of us think that we should go to a precinct. And I would add on the representative town meeting that if, if we think that we don't have great participation now for some of the boards and for running for office, and I would suggest that we don't, finding 100, 150 people to run for a precinct, or even if they were just at-large, I think it would be really impossible. I was just hearing today about framing him, I think they have representative town meeting and they have 180 members, and I think they have 40 or 60 open vacancies now, because they just can't find people. And they're a much larger community than we are. And nobody has gone to this form of government. I, I always get that, was it 1960, not, 1960? As a lot, somebody chose to do that. So I think what's really important to understand about what we're, you know, what we looked at is, you can ask yourself, do you think that a nine-person board represents you as well or better than if it's 500 people that come to town meeting, or 700, or 1,100? Because you're talking about nine people who are really, I hope, informed, right? They're, they're gonna devote their time and their energy and hopefully become knowledgeable, or maybe they already bring a lot of knowledge, I hope, I hope they will. So you can ask yourself that you could suggest that nine people could better represent you than the 1,200 who come to town meeting now. I'm, I'm just throwing that out as an idea. I'm not telling you to look at it that way, but it's one way to think about it.
Yeah, I think one of the big benefits that our voters could see, even though they would be losing their vote, they're not losing their voice, but they would be gaining more efficiency. So like, a family coming in to town meeting requesting sewer connection or something, or even the town requesting some major appropriation, as we've just seen, things happen over the course of 12 months. We have one meeting every year, sometimes two. It's more, it's a better reactive mechanism and hopefully find more, better financial, better financially for the town, but also for the community member who has to come before the council to request something like a zoning change or a sewer change. So it would be more efficient for the resident.
I also think, I, I just have to say this, because other folks have phrased it this way in some of our other sessions, that they're losing their vote. And I, I guess I would just point out, you're not losing your vote. You were, you're still, it's still a democratic system, you're still voting now, but instead of being part of a, you know, the 800 people that are in a gym who are voting on a, on a thing directly, you are losing the direct connection, but you are still voting for your representatives, nine town councilors. And I would argue, or I think you could argue that if, under open town meeting, if you wanted, if you had an issue and you wanted to lobby someone, or you wanted to talk to town meeting members, you would have to talk to hundreds of people to have an influence. Whereas with not, you're gonna know who the nine town councilors are, and they're gonna have office hours, and if they're doing their jobs and want to be re-elected, they're gonna talk to you about whatever the heck you think. And I'm, I'm not saying it's perfect, obviously all systems, you know, have their pluses and minuses, but it, you're, you're not, people are not losing their vote. They are, still have a vote, they still have a say in who gets, who gets these roles. It's just not the same process as open town meeting.
I would add to that, too. I, I actually think some of your access to the legislative part of government is enhanced as a, as a resident voter, where, right now, if town meeting makes a decision, if you are aggrieved by that decision in some way, your only mechanism is to wait for the next town meeting and file a petition to do that. Under this proposal, if you're aggrieved or people feel that the town council made a horrible decision, there's a mechanism for citizens to come together and say, you guys made a horrible decision, we want it revisited. And steps to be taken that the council can then decide to then either repeal the decision or ultimately the final step in that, if, if that group is still aggrieved, it goes on to the ballot, and then you still can vote. So that's something that we currently don't have, that level of legislative access, where it's, you can go and, yes, have your vote, but again, if, if that decision is, you know, you feel it's an error or not good, you're waiting. You're waiting a year. Maybe luck out and there's a special town meeting, and you can take it up then.
Brooke? Yep. Hearing this now in comparison to hearing it a few months ago, I think that this is getting in the right direction, okay? Nine people is not enough, I think there should be more, just to diffuse the influence. Just, let's, let's be honest about the island, okay? It's very easy to stack the deck. There's very few people, you know, that are active in this and they can easily get the majority. I understand that the districting and jurisdiction thing is difficult, but you can just play it out and just see where it lands, and Tom Nevers can be the equivalent to Shimo in the Inner Harbor. You know, it may not, it may not work out, but it may also parallel some perspectives. The pay thing has got to be important. People have to want to be committed to this for that much time. Because if I, you know, selectman for $3,500 a year was, is, is crushing. You know what I'm saying? I believe a mayor is, is necessary here, okay? Very. Because the amount of influence beyond town council, if you, nine people is good, 11 or 13 would be better, but the power given to the town manager is very specific and basically absolute. And yes, while we can debate it month after month if we're aggrieved or whatever, or we disagree with the way things are and dah dah dah, we should be having town meetings more than once, twice a year. We should be having them every three months. And when we have instances like our, our government right now is in complete flux, we should be having them as necessary. You know, because things affect us, we're separated from the rest of the world by the ocean, and if something happens to the rest of the world besides Nantucket, we should not be waiting till May to be addressing it. Do you know what I'm saying? If any of our lifelines are cut off, or potentially being cut off, we should look into it. And I really think that we need a mayor here because the people, even though they may disagree with their personal representative or the body as a whole, we need to have someone who's the bottom line. Because there's lots of people with lots of influence here and lots of friends and lots of relations, and everybody needs to know that there's gonna be someone who's not gonna be outvoted if it comes down to the veto. Because it can't be the town, you can't have the town manager vetoing the council. And if the council's deadlocked and things roll over till next year or next meeting or next whatever, and that just goes on forever, like the short-term rental thing could go on for years, you know, and locked up in court. So what I'm trying, what I'm trying to get at is, we need to have a bottom line.
So I just, just to, to clarify, and hopefully this helps a little bit, that the town manager as the, the executive for the town is not a part of the council. They don't vote, they don't participate in that manner.
Right.
And they don't have the ability to veto a council decision. The only group that has the ability to veto a council decision are the citizens through the citizen participation measure.
Right, but, so let me give you a good example. Enforcement, okay? You guys can legislate your brains out. If you don't have anybody enforcing these things, it's not gonna fly for five seconds. So, do you know what I'm saying? Because it's God's honest truth, you know that you guys can make all the decisions you want, and then you can go outside and tell the fire department to go check everybody on Main Street for compliance, and they'll go grandfather, and nothing will happen, nothing will change, no one will get what the right thing done needs to be. And that, you, you, you need to have someone separate from the town council that's the enforcer, because everyone here thinks they're entitled and can do whatever they want, and they know so-and-so. And this is a microcosm separate from the rest of reality. And if you don't have the law, then nobody's gonna follow it, and we could import chief of police's from everywhere else forever. But if we don't have someone that the community completely votes on as their leader, then we're just gonna be going back to town manager as our leader. And, and when they're not a leader, then no one looks to them and they don't do anything. So it just, it just happens, it just keeps going, nobody says anything about it. And we can't have that here, because it degraded our entire community for years. And, and kicking the can and watching it go down the road, even if we had nine people kicking the can, we still don't have anybody enforcing what needs to be enforced if they vote on it. If everybody from everywhere votes on whatever, and this migrates, then we need to have the bottom line, because the council is just gonna be another expansion of the select board. Okay?
Thanks, Brooke.
Sure. All right, so, one, we are proposing 40,000 and 50,000 for the chair. The chair is the person that people are gonna look to, because they're controlling the agenda, and they're the person that, we, we even thought of calling them the mayor, because it's the titular head. Some councils actually do that. So, number two. This system we're talking about is used by 60% of the country. 60%, okay? Massachusetts is weird, because we have these...
It works.
Well, maybe. The, the reality is that this system works for one reason, one very good reason. It has a strong executive who represents the institution, okay? That's what the town manager is. And then a strong body that represents the people, okay? And that is the reason why it works. You have to have that, because otherwise you'll have other groups or other interests that will dominate the discourse. Or you will have another group, perhaps the select board, that's sort of steering this right now. And they control the, the warrant, and that's fine, which, it's kind of what you need in a small town, to be honest. Like, the step, the system that we have now is the stepping stone to what we're going to. That's why you need it. As the system grows and becomes more complicated, you need the strong council, basically to negotiate enforcement. It's really not enough to have a law enacted. You have to negotiate the law with the executive for it to work. And that's why you need these strong bodies kind of working in opposition sometimes, sometimes together. And that's why it works.
Any other questions?
Can I just add something?
Sure.
I want to, this, this town council is not a select board. That's not what they are.
Right.
At all. So it's a totally different job. I hope that people who are on our select board would run for that job, because I think they're qualified, knowledgeable to do it. But they're, that's not what this is. This is really, if you look at our warrant, you, you need to think about what happens with the warrant, and how that's divided up, and how that's gonna get divided up by a town council. So we have about a third of, like, a lot of budgetary matters and articles from the select board. We have about a third from the planning board, and we have about a third from citizens. So all of that is going to now be assumed by a town council. So actually, it, it's more of a merging of a planning board and a select board. Though, you've got to be thinking about people that have a lot of land use, because they're gonna be looking at zoning bylaws. That's who's gonna be in charge of them. So you can't look at it as just a select board, right?
Right. But I understand that it evolves into greater responsibilities. I just want to make sure there's greater checks and balances. You know what I'm saying? I don't want this to turn into planning and land, or planning and land, or economic development. 11 people or seven, however many people are in that, and it getting, I don't want to see Nantucket get railroaded into just another form of, of, of steering the ship by someone's predestined plan. This is, I understand that this isn't gonna be a, a five-member select board anymore, and there's separations of these things, and you're gonna merge them, but I still think that there has to be separate checks and balances for even that, even those nine people. Because if those nine people do the same thing as those five people did previously, it doesn't change anything for us. We still get, they want to keep it at two meetings a year instead of four or increasing anything. If they wanted, if, if nine people decide to do the same thing five people decide to do, what does that change for us in the future? Nothing. So what I'm trying to get at is that it needs to, there needs to be a separation between the people that are, even if, if the head is, if the head is the mayor, that's fine. But there needs to be, the town should elect its leader, and then every region should elect its representative. And those representatives make all the decisions, and that leader then says, yes, I agree with the whole picture and not just the specifics of one area.
Right. So if I can hop in on that one, I, I think, to try to boil that down a little bit, make sure that I'm understanding it correctly, is, it's something that we've talked a lot about as a committee, is what does accountability look like between the legislative and the executive? You know, with, with the manager and a town council where, just for, for everyone that's, that's listening, under the proposed charter, the town council... everyone that's, that's listening, under the proposed charter, the town council is the hiring authority for the town manager. So I think the thought behind that, and kind of the principle, is if legislation is getting passed by the town council, if your town manager isn't implementing that, or implementing that effectively, then you can hold that person accountable. Right? You're, you're their contracting authority. And I know...
That's not how it is here.
I would, I would say that we haven't seen this system in place here to make that predisposed judgment off the jump. But that's what you're creating. Because right now, the legislative body that we have as town meeting, we pass legislation all of the time. And what's the mechanism for our current legislative body, other than future petitions, to hold the executive account of, to what's been passed at previous town meetings? Right? And I think creating what that responsibility and accountability cycle looks like is something that's going to have to be strongly defined. And I think what I personally like about the proposed system is I get to vote for the person who I want to do that. Right? I can vote for the nine councilors. And there are ways, again, if I don't feel that they're doing what I think needs to be done, I can challenge their decision. Ultimately, if they're not doing a good job, and people feel they're doing a poor job, there's a citizen mechanism to remove people from the council.
How awful.
Well, a councillor's term would be, the proposal forward is, you would be on staggered three-year terms. So there would be three people up for election on an annual basis.
And that causes problems in the legal procedures of a challenge to any laws that people implement. Because they can drag these cases out as long as they want, until those people are out of office. You know what I'm saying? So if I disagree with something, I can take it to court. And then I can drag it out through procedure. And then I can drag it to the state, and then then nothing happens. And then that person gets voted out, and my person gets voted in, and then I get my way. You see what I'm saying? So there needs to be mechanisms in place that those things can be cut short and dealt with immediately.
Right. So just to kind of walk through what a citizen referendum would be on a decision of the council, is there are signatures collected and filed, and if the amounts, the amount is certified, that goes back to the council, and the council can simply vote to annul the decision that they made, and then that matter ends. If they choose not to, it proceeds further, and the end of that process isn't court. The end of that process is that question gets asked on the next available ballot that's eligible for all citizens to participate in. And there's a requirement threshold for citizen participation in that ballot vote, where you can't have, you know, 1% of voters show up and overturn that decision. But obviously, you know, there's time to then get messaging out and do those things. But if you meet that percentage threshold, the citizens, not, not a court, not the council, not mayors, the citizens get the ultimate say in how that process ends, through, through a ballot vote.
Thanks.
That's to create more work for the clerks.
Just for clarification. So for an appropriation, there's no longer a ballot question requirement with the town council?
For spending appropriations, those would still have the same, right? Overrides and borrowing and those things would still have the same voting requirement that's in place today. To get on to the ballot would be a vote of the council. But just as an example, if they wanted to do an override to Proposition 2 and 1/2, that would still ultimately end up on the ballot for people to vote.
Okay. And then Jill, you were saying about the planning board, and the town council basically becomes, the, the planning board is no longer...
Yeah, they pass all the zoning bylaws.
I just find it...
There's still, there will still be a planning board.
Yes, because they have to do like A and Rs, and they have to do special permits and things like that. But a zoning bylaw is not going to, they might come from that planning board, but that planning board will not vote on that with the force of law. It has to go to the town council, and it requires a two-thirds vote.
Okay.
So that would be a change. And I would argue that we should go to an appointed planning board, and then I want these planning board members to run for a town council, because they have the knowledge of land use. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody online? Do we have any? No?
I've been watching. No hands yet.
Okay.
What you were talking about, if it goes to, to, you're talking about that.
You need 200, correct me if I'm wrong, but you need 200 signatures to go back to the council and to talk, you know, that something you didn't like got passed. Right? And then it would have to go to a ballot, and then you'd need 20% of the registered voters at the ballot. All right?
Right. So that...
Which is, we only usually get about 23% at a, at one of our ballots anyway. So it would, it'd be a lot of voters, that we'd have to rescind something. Right?
Correct.
Okay.
No, I mean, I can look real quickly. I have it here in front of me. It's funny, is I meant to like, look this up today, and I was going through it. But it's, correct, it's 20%. So on Nantucket right now, just in real round numbers, and Nancy, please forgive me when I make hash of this, or Laura. Nantucket's right around, just for quick and easy math, last, my understanding was somewhere between 10,000 and 11,000 registered voters? About 10? So, yeah, if you were looking for that 20% threshold, you would need 2,000 people to come out and vote. And I, what's that? There's, that also includes, right, it's a regular ballot, so it would be vote by mail, anything that's there. I don't know what the voter turnout, I'm glad we have the clerks here, they might be able to... I'd say generally, it runs 2,000 to 3,000, so.
Yeah. So again, I think it's also, right, and I, I'll say this is just for myself. I think that's one of the really interesting parts, where if you're a citizen, and you're passionate about an issue, and you've gone through the effort that's there, you can take that initiative to try to encourage people to go vote. You can message, you can put advertisements in the newspaper, on social media, you can do things. I mean, I think that's the one thing that we see even now with, with open town meeting, where when people are passionate about decisions or articles that are there, we have never had a shortage of people who are willing to share their opinion about things. And I, I think if it's a, personally, again, and I know you say I'm naive, or, you know, pie in the sky dreamer here, if it's an issue that's that impactful, or people care that much about, if you can inform people on those decisions, they'll hopefully come out to vote. I mean, I think that's kind of the beauty of democracy.
I, I would say the most important thing is, you need to come to the town council meetings. That, that's where you're going to be heard. That's where you're going to be talking to them. That's where they're going to be debating things in public, and you need to stay on top of that. That's where you have the chance to persuade. I know we all think, oh, we're only going to persuade if we have so many more people on my list. That, that's not really what anybody would want. If you have a concern, you need to come and, and make your case, and, and have them listen to you, and hopefully have relationships with these councillors. I think that's the best thing, so you can talk to them and hear them, and, you know. People come to town meeting now, and they think that they've come to town meeting, and maybe they've done their civic duty because they showed up that day. This system will require people to pay attention, I think, a little more often than, than just that one day or, or two days that we have a year. So it will be different, but it might be a little less stressful than looking at 120 articles in one day.
There should be more town meetings a year. That's obvious.
Real quickly, if I may, too. It wasn't touched on, or if I don't remember, it wasn't in the presentation, but it was just mentioned. The proposed charter also requires that town council meet a minimum of once a month. It's a minimum. They can meet, again, you can post a meeting within 48 hours. So you essentially could meet, you know, on the schedule if you wanted to, if there was an issue that was that pressing. But there would be a minimum of 12 open session meetings a year.
And probably, and probably more.
I just have one question.
Fire away.
In the event of emergency on Nantucket. Just one question. In the event of emergency on Nantucket, whatever you want to call it, large scale, who's in charge and why?
Town manager.
Town manager. And what authority do they have in that crisis situation, according to state law, or, or whatever? So like, if we're cut off, no power, no communication, town manager's in charge. And to what extent, and to what authority? So like, if half the town wants to do this, or half the town, or people out in Medicaid don't want to do what they're, they're saying, or whatever. I'm just saying, just throwing a scenario out there, because you never know.
We'll cut them loose. We'll chop off that end of the island.
Right. I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's...
No, I mean, the, we already had, we already have what's considered a strong town manager in terms of the administrative and managerial, managerial control that Libby has.
Yes.
Under town council, town manager, there is, you know, I don't, I think of it as like, 5% or 10% more. It's some more functions sort of shift to the town manager. And the town manager supervises the chief of police, the chief, the fire chief, all those, all those individuals in those departments report to him or her.
Okay. I'll, I'll just add that, so again, the town manager is the executive, and they control the chief of police, fire, even, we even have a department of emergency management, it's right upstairs. And, I mean, I've been a firefighter, I can tell you that, you know, I've been part of emergencies and things that were natural disasters on Nantucket. And there's a command structure that forms pretty much immediately. And...
So it's not, it's town manager, it not have, have, have a council?
If you think about it, if it's a legislative branch, that's what we're proposing, is town council's a legislative branch, some duties of the current executive select board will go to them, but most of the duties will go to the town manager. Okay? But it does, so it separates. There's very clear duties either side.
Ladies and gentlemen, there are no other questions? Going once? Twice? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, can I say something real quickly?
Sorry.
I know you guys are here tonight. Again, we'll, we'll be doing this again Saturday morning, 10:00 AM to noon. And then Monday, we are at the Athenaeum from 5:30 to 7:30. Our committee does meet pretty regularly at posted meetings, usually Wednesdays, kind of alternate Wednesdays, from, from 3:00 to 5:00. Those are, again, those are open public sessions. We encourage people to go. We also have a town email address. There's tcsc@nantucket-ma.gov. If you think of something later, you want to send it in, any thoughts are welcome. It will be put out to the group for discussion. Thanks, everyone, for coming.
I can say, one more thing I forgot.
Sure, sure.
Nancy, you started to talk in the beginning about the going to the ballot again. Sorry. She was talking about, in the beginning, about it had to come back again to a ballot. What if it failed at that ballot a year later? Then what? Will you just keep bringing it back?
Well...
It's just a what if.
Well, yeah. I think, I mean, two years from now, this group may or may not be involved in this committee. But yeah, we would have, if it failed, that that comes back from the state.
From the state.
And the electorate says, oh, we don't like that so much, and we vote it down. Then the group has to be either reformed, if people that are interested in the town council form of government, and, yeah, they'd have to sort of gear up again to start the process. You would probably need another town meeting vote to send it back to the State House.
To do, do it all over again. Okay. And then, Nantucket would be like, the second smallest population to have town council. Am I right or wrong about that?
I don't know where the second smallest. We're definitely on the smaller side of those 13, of the 13 towns.
Right.
20, 18, 20,000 people, I forget where that makes it.
Most, most other... Yeah.
Yeah.
Most, it's, because it's usually made for a city, is what it is. And we would be, what we'd be known as, the city, the town of Nantucket.
Well, you know, you can drop the city. It is, it is, you're absolutely right. It's technically a city form of government.
Right.
But all the, I think the 13 communities, trying to avoid a say, communities that have converted over the last 30 or 40 years, they're all the towns of. So they've, they've, you know, adopted the name so that they still are a town, even though...
Also, our budget is quite big for having such a small population, which is one of, and our, our borrowing authority is huge. So...
Right.
That makes us a lot different from other towns.
I mean, I've said, I mean, Nantucket is a $300 million enterprise. You know, in terms of many of the towns in the Commonwealth, we are, I bet we're in the top 30% in terms of, I'm making that up, so I could be wrong. But I, I wouldn't be surprised at all if we were well into the top half in terms of financial size and the complexity of the, of our investment programs and capital programs. It's, we're, even though the population's a little on the small side, you know, the real estate values and the cost of doing things out here makes the town's budget significant.
It's true. True. I'd say, to quickly add to that, too. Our population, too, I know, our, you know, our registered voting population is right around 10. The last census that came out was a little bit closer to 20. And then our seasonal population peaks out, you know, well over 60. So it's, we're a busy place. Lots of, lots of demands and, and infrastructure demands, and it's not the sleepy, sleepy town it used to be.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Again, thanks, everybody. Really appreciate you all coming.